All right, we have a quorum, noting a quorum present. It is seven o'clock, so I called this the planning board of March twenty first, two thousand twenty three to order. First order of business is approval of the minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty three. Rob and Frank, have you guys had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Have indeed. What a what a book that was, Steph. Good job.
Rob, have you had a chance to look at the minutes?
A quick look, but I wasn't at the meeting, of course.
Will just joined, so you if if Rob decides to recuse himself, we have Will now as well.
Will, have you had an opportunity to look at the minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty three? Will, you're muted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, I'm in the car. For the time being, but I should be home in a little bit.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the planning board minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty three as written?
So moved.
Do I have a second? That would be you, Will. Will, you're on mute.
Sorry, I just shifted my car into reverse and it took away the the screen that lets me unmute. Second.
All right, it's been moved a second. Was there any discussion regarding the planning board minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty three?
Before you vote, Addie May just joined too, in case she has any.
No, it's too late. All those in favor signify by saying hi. I'm gonna do a real roll call vote. Frank?
Right.
Will?
Will?
Hi.
Chris is an I. Okay, I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump around like I always do.
Can I assume that Rob is is an abstain?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I was saving you the effort, Rob. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the agenda around a little bit, because some of the things I mentioned earlier will have an impact on things that I say later. So this past Saturday, Frank and I attended the Citizens Planner Training Conference at Holy Cross. So I think this is the first one they've had since COVID. We used to do these things for the Board of Health, so if there's anyone here from advisory, I want to thank you for putting a couple of hundred bucks in our budget so we can attend these things. The first course that I attended was zoning for multifamily under forty A, section three A, which is the next big bylaw that we're gonna have to deal with. Based on the questions asked, Sherbin is clearly ahead of other towns. You can just tell by the questions that some people, some planning boards had were just still asking like things that we answered six months ago. This later this year, the state will provide a sort of model bylaw template for towns to use, and then sort of update and plug in info that would be pertinent to our town. My hope, and and who the heck knows what's gonna happen, I would like to have it ready for town meeting two thousand twenty four. We have to have this thing done by December of two thousand twenty five, so if we have an issue at next town meeting, then we have two other stabs at it. I hope people understand that this is, it's not gonna be an easy thing, because a lot of people aren't gonna understand. But it is the law and we have to push forward with it. So the second session was on planning for solar. And while I was sitting there, Gino was at the advisory meeting, three slides referenced transmission rights of ways are encouraged over for overlay districts. So while I was sitting there, Gino, I took pictures and I was shooting at the Gino. And so if if people in town are concerned about an overlay district, there's a lot of support for it, so. And the other thing I got out of that session was that right now there are three studies underway on technical as well as policy recommendations for towns regarding their solar bylaws, and they're gonna wrap it up and it'll be provided to us later this year. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. The third session that I attended was on zoning pitfalls. I also had the the pleasure of getting caught up, caught up. I went over and chatted with her, our old town council, Barbara Saint Andre. And I said, Sherbin, Board of Health, we worked on some things. She started laughing, so it's nice. I guess she's working in Midway, Gino? Is it Midway?
Yes.
I always liked her. She's funny. And I think she served the town well, so. And the last thing I want to say is Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll spoke. And and it was interesting, because she started her career in Salem's planning office. So she did talk a lot about planning, and I think planning boards have an ally with her. She, I was actually very impressed by her. So that's all I have to say. Frank, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was also very impressed with with Kim Driscoll. I've written up several things about our meeting, but I think some of the things, I had five takeaways. The first was her background was in planning. The second was that she talked about the importance of adding more affordable housing to the Commonwealth, how that's just a really critical thing, and that was something that they're gonna be focusing on a lot. She talked about preserving the good character and the nature of the Commonwealth, as well as promoting the the climate change aspect. So even though they we want to do development, we don't want to cut down all our trees to do make that happen, so we want to do that responsibly. And talked about, I think the most important part is that she's she's part of a brand new you know, duo that's coming to to the state. And that she wants, she and Governor Healy want to work very well with with the towns and the communities in Massachusetts to make these things happen. So she wants to be a partner in positive growth. And real briefly on the other ones, I went to a building community resilience workshop, which was really more of a discussion about tools and resources for how to do that, which is really important, both for sustainability or ESC and Energy Sustainability Committee, as well as this planning board and Gino. So I got some some resources from that, but a lot of the discussion was on the new biomaps, biomaps three, and that that is now out and how that's the third generation and a much improved with with a lot more information put in there, and also the resolution of things are a lot better with it, so that now the that map can be used for better overlaying and planning of where you want to put a culvert, where actually the water, you know, brooks and and so on are going. So that that was something important. I also sat in on the same planning for solar as Chris did. And he wrote, he discussed that. And then the third one I went to was basically a planning board one oh one, so that I can you know, learn about what planning was doing, how they do it, and how they get things accomplished and so on, which are pretty much the the operations of the of the meetings that we have on hold. So I just learned more about that. I think it was a little bit redundant, but I also learned a few new things and it was interesting, it's interesting to hear that. We're running ours correctly.
All right, thank you. Does any board member have any questions? All right.
Last thing I do want to say, I'm sorry, one one more thing. I did want to say that I was really impressed with how well this thing was attended. There were so many communities present. There are a lot of people in in the audience, and it was nice to be able to network with some of them as well. And as Chris mentioned, that we're, you know, we're ahead of the game in in several areas, including solar.
All right. Does the board have any questions? All right.
I had one question, Chris.
Yes, Rob, please.
Relative to the article we'll be discussing, you talked about transmission line right of ways. I had heard some people speculating that you cannot like.
I don't want to talk about that yet. We'll we'll talk about that when we talk about the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. Because that's something specific to that discussion and so I didn't mean to cut you off, but we will, we'll talk about that in about two minutes. So the next thing I want to talk about is sort of a quick update on three A. One thing that towns have received from the Attorney General's Office. And I don't know if the board has gotten this memo yet, but it'll be sent to, I'm sure the select board has got it, but we're gonna resend it. It's an advisory concerning the enforcement of the MBTA Community Zoning Act. So I'm gonna just, I'm gonna bore you and just read a couple lines. Massachusetts cities and towns have broad authority to enact local zoning zoning ordinances and bylaws to promote the public welfare so long as they are not inconsistent with constitutional or statutory requirements. The MBTA Community Zoning Act provides one such statutory requirement. And then it goes on to say other things. The last paragraph, all MBTA communities must comply with the law. Communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action. The law requires that MBTA communities shall have a compliant zoning district and blah, 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 blah. So basically, she's saying, if you have any thoughts about not behaving, the beatings will continue till everyone falls into line. So again, last year, when when this first was discussed, there were several people, not on this board, but there were several people that thought, oh, we're gonna fight this. We're not gonna fight anything. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best to be good citizens, comply with the law. Unfortunately, that's also something that has to get through town meeting. The advantage to it is, and Gino can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's a simple majority vote. It's not a two thirds vote, correct, Gino?
That's correct.
And and again, this is another thing where we're gonna start working on it immediately after town meeting. It is gonna be a ton of work. There's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be whining, moaning, and gnashing their teeth. And we just basically have to hold our nose and and go right through and get it done. It is, it is not a may, it is a shall. So if you guys haven't seen a copy of that, it'll be sent to the board and it'll be sent to advisory. It'll be sent to the select board as well. Does anyone have any questions about three A? And does Gino have anything else to add to that?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. All right, I'm a few minutes behind, but I wanted to do that first, so it is seven twelve, so I'd like to continue and close up the hearing this evening on the zoning article to delete section five point one and replace it with a new section. I've said this multiple times. And and initially, before this past Saturday, I was going to go through the last minute changes that I had made with with somebody. I'm not gonna get into names. And and then afterwards, I sat down, Will came over, and we sat down and we and we looked at some of the proposed changes. Some of them we accepted, some of them we didn't really feel like it belonged for multiple reasons. Our current bylaw right now, in my view, provides no promotion for solar, and if challenged, it provides no protection. So a little bit about me, I'm an eighty percenter. So when when you have to deal with something, you have to gather at least eighty percent. And then at that, you kind of jump in and say, okay, let's do the best we can. And that was my goal with this bylaw. I never thought that this was gonna be the final product. There's still a lot of things that we don't know about, obviously toward the end of the year and the fall. Those studies that are being done, there are gonna be recommendations to the towns how to proceed with their bylaw. So basically, I wanted to put something that gives the town some protection at the same time that would promote solar. The bylaws turned into a mess, in my view. I think it is way too long. There's been, it's like making sausage, and I think it should be, I think about a third of it should be able to come out. And and what I was hoping to do is I was hoping to put together a document that can get through town meeting. Again, we need two thirds vote. And then once we got it through town meeting, then when the recommendations in the fall came out, at least this would provide us some protection, and it would also promote solar. Based on the conversations that occurred in advisory, there were two things that happened. Number one, and I'm not gonna pick on advisory, I, right now, I think the select board and most of the boards in town are the best they've ever been. So I've been involved on town committees and boards for twenty five years, and I think right now select board is the best, advisory is the best, Board of Health is the best, planning board is the best. But I do have to have, I do have a little criticism here, and I believe me, I've scaled this way back, because I was pretty angry the other day. I tend to get angry when I think things don't go the way they should. My goal was to put together a bylaw that would promote and protect us. And then later in the fall, when when we know more, go back, clean it up, and then next town meeting, go back and say, okay, well, based on this, we have to move this around, but at least we would have something in place. So what happened at advisory is two things. Number one, somebody that is promoting a specific project spoke. And I'm not opposed to that, but they spoke and and they and the comments were made, well, I don't know if you can put this in there, or I don't know if you can defend this position. And and there's no question, there's some things in here that we don't know how they would hold up. We'll have better knowledge in the fall, but at least something would be in place. The other side of it is, it was clear to me that I wanted to have this thing cleaned up, and I wanted to have an agreement that even though it's not perfect, we would get at the town meeting and clean it up for the good of the town. I truly believe this is the way to go. But I, there's no way in the world I want this to be another crap show at town meeting, like what happens every single year. Everyone that's been to town meeting knows exactly what I'm talking about. To eat, last year, there were two articles that had no business tying up everyone's time, and people just get up there and they just talk and talk and talk, and I don't want that to happen to this bylaw, because we need two thirds. And if it doesn't pass, we can't bring it back for two years. Unless significant changes are made to it. So what I'm gonna propose to the board, initially, I was planning on going over the changes and seeing what the board thought about it. But what I'm gonna propose to the board is that we withdraw this article. I'll talk to Jeff Waldron. We will wait until we get this additional information and clean up the bylaw and maybe would be able to do it for the fall, maybe we'll do it for the spring. The problem that I have is you know, nobody, we're not gonna get challenged and sued tomorrow. But in the next two years, probably. And so if we don't get this thing passed, I think we've put the town in a very vulnerable position. So my other problem is, as everybody knows, and I've known this for a while, Gino's leaving. This is gonna be a much more difficult thing to draft with someone who I don't even know who we're gonna be working with. The last concern I have is the three A stuff. The town is gonna be howling over the three A stuff. And and we're gonna have to pull together, and we're gonna have to push that thing through. It has to pass. So that means next year, we're gonna have two not so great articles. When I say not so great, I think they're wonderful articles, but not so great for getting through town meeting. So that was why I wanted to get this thing through this year. Even though I knew more information was gonna come up in the fall. But there's no way I'm gonna sit at town meeting and answer things. Basically, the conversation at advisory was, one side felt like, well, this is too strict. And other people are threatening, they want it to be more restrictive. I'm not gonna play that game, and I'm not gonna waste this board's time, so. I'm not gonna open this up for public comment, because I don't really want public comment. I wanna see how this board feels, and I'm gonna start with Gino. And again, I don't, I don't want you people just, I don't want the board just to agree with Chris. I really wanna know what the board thinks. Are we gonna be able to push this over the line? Because if if we don't have support, and I mean universal support, I'm not interested. I'll pull it. And and if the town's vulnerable, it's not on us. I think we'd almost be more vulnerable pushing something forward, putting in a lot more garbage and having it not hold up if challenged. So obviously, I'm not in a good mood. So Gino, please, what are your thoughts? And and you, and I don't want you to say just what I want to hear. I really want to know what this board thinks about this.
Well, I don't know, I've spent a lot of time making the case that this provides us some protection, not perfect, can be adjusted as we go along. I hear your point about more information coming up. Studies being done, more advice given to the towns. So you know, from that standpoint, it might make some sense to hold off. I don't know, I I couldn't give you a definitive answer as to what's the best way to go.
That's fine. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I'm springing this on everyone, and 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 I just wanna get a sense. I think it's much worse for the town not to have something in place. But at the same time, we're not gonna put together something that has no chance of standing up. And putting more, making this more restrictive is not gonna help us. And and unfortunately, what what happens is people can put whatever they want in here, but we're the ones that have to enforce it. We're the ones that have to defend it. And you know, and I'm not even thinking about fall town meeting, because I'm way too busy in the summer to be redoing something. So I'm really thinking about next spring. And and it'll be a big change from, a third of this is gonna come out, and a third of it's gonna be in the rules and regs. I purposely stuck a lot of stuff that belonged in the rules and regs in the bylaw, Gino, when I talked about it. I'm not taking comments right now. The board's gonna speak, so put your hands down, please. I purposely positioned it this way, so when people looked at it, they would say, this is a robust document, there's protections in place. And then later on, I was gonna slide a lot of this stuff out. Once it passed, it'll still be there, but it'll be in the rules and regs. So we did a lot of sliding around to try to find something that we could get through. And and again, two thirds is tough, especially if there's a handful of people that are going to oppose it. And basically, I don't want that fight. I would like, once in a while, for someone to say, thank you, planning board, for working on this damn thing for six months. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Frank. Frank?
Thank you. So a couple of things that I learned, and one of the things that you said as well, is in terms of taking it back. And before I go and explore that route, let me just ask a question, because I wasn't there, I was at the at the conference. Can somebody tell me what the advisory vote and what the select board vote was on this?
I can tell you. The select board, it was pretty much unanimous. Paul Durensis abstained because it was a project potentially, somebody had proposed a project for his property, and advisory gave unanimous support with the condition that we check with town council, and I'm not gonna check with town council personally, because I know what town council is gonna say. They're gonna say, be careful, that will be a hard thing to enforce, and it probably won't hold up in court. That's what she's gonna say. I know that she, that's what she's gonna say. And and so then I have to then go to advisory and and say, well, and then what are they gonna say? Take it out? I mean, you know, it it puts, it puts us in a very, very weird position. I hope that answers your question, Frank.
It does. So what I want to say is, I I feel it's important that with all the work that we've done with on this right now, and all the work that you've done in looking at all the different towns, and that we have Gino with us, and and based also on what you said about the going into the following town meeting in two thousand twenty four with with the contentious that having two at one time is can can be problematic to be a challenge. And the biggest thing that I have a concern about is leaving the town exposed. I feel we should go forward with this, because it sounds like in the fall, we would be making potentially a large enough of a change to the the bylaw that we, if it, if if it didn't pass, that we could go back again next year, because there'd be a big enough change. I feel as though with all the work that we've done and the the discussions that we have, it sounds like it's it's only a handful of people out of about two hundred or two hundred fifty people that show up at at town meeting. I think we need to go for it.
Okay. When you say bring it back, it would have to, there would have to be a significant change in the bylaw.
And you said that most likely that would be the case, because by fall, winter, we would have a lot more clarity on some of these things that might end up making it a a large enough change.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Rob Wolf, Rob, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'm just, I am concerned about exactly how this works. Given that the warrant has already been closed and voted on by the board, can we still withdraw it before the motion happens?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, I feel boy, I'd I'd kinda like to see this just go through and say that, you know, it's as as good as we've got now, and we'll be very willing to to carefully consider changes at the at the follow on meeting.
Okay.
I I feel like we're but yeah, I I realize there's a risk there.
Okay.
I I understand your position.
Okay. Will, what are your thoughts?
So I was, I was at advisory presenting the the article.
I can't hear you, bud.
Can you, can you hear me at all?
Little bit.
I'm on my my AirPods. Hold on a second.
That's okay.
Here we go. How's that any better?
Much better, Will. Thank you.
Okay. I I didn't think that that the opposition at advisory was was so vociferous. I don't think it's something that anybody wants to see, having trees chopped down and solar panels put up necessarily. So I think there was a little bit of sort of generalized grumbling about that and and holding your nose and swallowing, something that you don't wanna swallow. But I think that everybody understands the need for it, at least everybody at advisory seems to, and on the select board as well. So I was, I was you know, after after I hung up off that call, I was fairly encouraged that that the message had gone through. And I thought that we would get support, at least from those boards. I I don't have a, I wouldn't say a great sense of of public opinion on this, but I think that we were able to explain it to the the folks at advisory and the folks at select board, and if we can do that, we can hopefully explain that to two thirds of the people in town. So I I guess I'm in favor of trying to push forward for now.
So Will's will go forward. Now, the other question I have for you, Will, is you're gonna be the one at town meeting taking most of the shots. I'm, I'm very willing to take the shots every single day of the week. But but your your feeling is, you think we can push this thing through?
Well, Chris, if if recent history is any guide, I'm gonna be in my car during this whole thing, so. No, I I I'm happy to get up and do it. I I think that I think we can make the case.
All right. So actually, at this point, I'm still gonna ask Addie May, but but her vote doesn't even matter, because it wouldn't be three, even if she said yes or no. We got three yeses, but Addie May, please.
I was gonna say, I think we have this hearing on the calendar. I think we are, I know you've kind of worked into it more than you and Will have I was going to say, I think tonight we have this hearing on the calendar, I think we are, I know you've put a ton of work into it more than, um, you and Will have. Put a lot more into than, um, I certainly haven't dug into the weeds on this as much. So I know you're exhausted, but I think it would be good. To go through this tonight.
Okay.
We've had this situation before, the open space zoning by law that we, um. Broadened all the way to town meeting and then we pulled because it got. Kind of sticky at town meeting. And we can still do that, we can. We can pull it. At town meeting if it just, if we, we get to the day of town meeting and still feel like. There's still. Much more confusion about this than there should be. We still have some time, I, I, I agree that, um. I don't think any change we would make would constitute enough to. Um, be enough of a change to, just because of the nature of what it is, I mean, you're doing a, um. Solar volatile, about volatile solar by law, there's just no room in there to, for there to be enough to necessarily probably get that. Attorney General's office to allow us to bring it back within a year, so we would want to be careful. But I think we should stay the course and. Get the, you know, use this hearing. To get some discussion. And it is on Zoom, which means it is an opportunity for people who haven't been following and don't understand to. Listen, watch. And try to make some sense of this.
Okay, Chris, can I just, uh. Um, point out one thing, the, the two-year wait. Uh, issue is, there's kind of a loophole in it. If it's a planning board recommended by law, it can come back less than two years. If the planning board recommends it again, you know, in a, in a future meeting. The, the requirement for significant changes or the. The actual languages, specific and material changes. Uh, that pertains to, um, special permits or variances. But for zoning bylaws, if the, i- if there is a two-year wait, but if the planning board proposes and recommends it. It, it, that way, that way does not have to happen.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so I'm not even going to take a vote. Um, the board, the board wants to push this thing forward and I'll support whatever the board wants, obviously. I, I'm very glad that, um. We can have these discussions and, you know, and we can support each other, um. So. Marion. Please.
Thanks, Chris. Um, I, I know you don't want to have a lot of discussion, but I, I don't want to discuss it. I think the vote of, of select board and advisory was quite clear. I think both understood perfectly that it's not perfect, but that we need something in place. And, uh, so I think the rub is, we know it's not perfect and I'm not going to go into how it could be better or what. What the attorney general is going to say because it's too late for that, but. Um, I am in favor of, of going forward with it. And I think the key is going to be how it's presented at town meeting. I think it was hard for people to understand. That, uh, the urgency of getting something in place and that it's a work in progress. It'll probably come back next year with changes. And people don't feel like they're getting locked in if they vote for this at town meeting. But, you know, it, it's, it's going to be a little bit of PR and how it's presented.
Um, well, thank, well, thank you, Marion, and, and, and I was actually planning on putting together a handout. So when people came into town meeting, when they're sitting there bored through the budget part of it, they can actually. Learn something and, and we can, because we only have five minutes, but if we can use that time, I think that'll help as well. And I think Will will be able to pitch it properly. And there's no question that next year, we're going to have to clean this up, there's no question at all. Um, and again, my big hurry was just getting something in place. To protect the town and to promote solar, it's not just for protection.
Yeah, I think everybody understood that and if, uh, at least in, in select board and advisory understood it. And if the public knows that planning board has agreed to work with. Conservation and, uh, the town council and whoever else is interested. Uh, and get a better, uh, bylaw in for town meeting next year, that's great.
And we'll not necessarily work with everybody, but obviously town council's hand in hand and, and she has. Made plenty of comments that on a Zoom meeting, I'm not going to be at liberty to share it with anyone, so.
Right, but you know, I mean, work with any, anyone who's constructively.
Yep.
To make it better, I mean.
No doubt, no doubt, Marion, thank you. Michael.
Michael, less than fifty-four forestry. I'm glad that you're. You've decided to move ahead with it. Um. I'm not sure I would characterize the way that, that meeting went as the way you did, Chris. Um, I was the one. Who was. Talking about the fact that I was frustrated that certain things weren't in there. That was talking about the fact that I would go to the floor at town meeting to get some changes, uh, in it. And I was clear about which, which changes they were. And I don't think that that should be viewed as some dismay about the work that you've done and that the planning board has done. I find it a little, uh. I think it's too much of an extreme characterization to say that nobody appreciated. What the planning board did and to disparage the fact that other people have different points of view about this. Um, I've spent a bit of time nowhere near what you have. But I think that you could be a little kinder to, like, when there's differences of opinion.
I, I, I'm. I'm going to disagree a little bit, I think I have been more patient and kinder in. I mean, we spent, we spent some time and we had plenty of emails and, and I was, at the same time. We have to enforce this and we have to use this to protect the town, so. I, I'm not going to let people put anything they want in there if I don't think legally, we're, we're in a position to support it. And I, and I, and I, Michael, I know you've done a lot of work, but. Chutesberry is very different than Sherbin, Chutesberry has had, no, I'm just, I'm, you know.
I'm not, I, I only brought up, I, the thing is, is that there are only two issues that I brought up at town meeting. None of which were that, with, none of which. Were that different from, uh, from other things that were going on, so I, I don't, I've already. Accepted the fact that there are certain things that you, we disagreed on and you didn't use, so that's not where I was going in terms of how the process went. Process is fine, the problem is, is the characterization of it as being that it's so harsh to deal with other opinions, but that's water under the bridge. Um, the going forward part is that, right, we learned at town meeting that we can't make certain changes even on the floor anyway. Terms of additions or whatever else, so that the whole idea of whether there should have been a background here. It wasn't a matter of putting in things you couldn't enforce. I was frustrated with putting in something that would have helped us enforce it. That I thought would have been added greater strength. You didn't, you decided not to put it in there, you summarized it in certain ways, I thought we could have had something stronger to make it easier. For you to enforce the bylaw. So it wasn't a matter of, of even of a difference of opinion in that level, but that's fine, that seems to be too long to go there. Um, the issue of, the other thing that I was frustrated on the forestry stuff. And it's possibly too late is the fact that things evolved so that there really isn't sort of a more minimum. Issue there in terms of, uh, some protections, greater mitigation when there's cutting down of forests. And that's, and it's probably too late for that or we can deal with, then in the next round of discussions about that. And that I hope you do, open it up. To everybody's there that in terms of who you want to talk to about it, even if there are differences of opinion.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
No, I, I'm going to respond to Michael real quick, um, so one of the three studies is Mass Audubon. And the topic that you're looking at is exactly what their concern is. And those are the recommendations, they said they're, that are going to be end of the summer, early fall. And they want people to incorporate it, but they're going to come up with the language and, and hopefully it'll be universally accepted. So.
No, no, I agree that that could be there and I felt like, right, things got changed around, some of the edits I missed in the last. Round there, but I guess as to, uh, how the maximum lot coverage is described there, which I, uh. Which, um. Is. Needs some clarification about it because a lot of the issue of protecting stuff in the maximum lot coverage, I think got a little, uh. A, 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 a little misworded in the sense that, how much of that issue of. What's disturbed and undisturbed is the fact that whether we were trying to get it to deal with protecting a forest in particular, as opposed to. Uh, any particular natural, uh, terrain there. So that I think, I think it's probably too late to refine that, that's a comment obviously that a developer brought up that I don't think we have to dance to necessarily. But that there is some, uh, some clarity that could possibly be put in there, but. Maybe at this point, it's not worth it and we'll, uh, deal with it in the next thing. But, and, uh, and the next round, um. But in the end, I, uh. I don't, I guess it, it's somewhat of the. I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's some of the tenor of the way you're talking about the process. That I think is, it wasn't as bad as it is, as the way it seemed to be portrayed and the, and the discussion that had, uh. At the advisory, wasn't that meeting, wasn't that, oh, that negative in terms of driving. A process except for me saying that I was frustrated about a few things that, that weren't clear. Um, at all in the, uh, in there and that, and it could have been approved. But there are things that are probably not possible to do anyway, other than my comments, I don't think there was much negative. Um, feedback on this thing, that's why I'm sort of the idea that you started out with. Wanting to withdraw, I mean, obviously there'll be some other issues about the overlay at town meet, at town meeting that. But I would say that. The way the meeting went was much more positive than the way you, that the way you seem to have taken it. And I'll let it go at that.
Okay, well, thank you, does the board have any other comments? All right, um, has the board seen the last edits that were made to the bylaw? You should have been forwarded, does anyone have any questions about any of the edits that were made in the past two weeks?
I think I might just have a one or two. If, if I may, and they're probably more grammatical than anything else, um. I just, I, I have one question, if you don't mind, on page, I'm trying to get, get it out here.
Gino, I'm going to let you field these questions, all right?
So, on, on the previous, it was page three on a, a page four and on this one, it's on page three, it says, uh, mitigation section ten, five point ten point five. And when I read the title of, um. Uh, section five point ten point five, it says aperturant accessories, uh, structures, it doesn't say anything about mitigation. I don't know if that's an, an issue that needs rectifying or not.
It does, I mean, that should be fifteen, not five, I pointed that out at the advisory meeting.
And, and I don't know if that's been fixed subsequently, but that's, that's the very, very last words of that section right before five point ten point five, Gino. Uh, which is on page three and the next section is that five point ten point five, which then says aperturant and accessories. And right before the very last word is mitigation section ten point, uh, five point ten point five, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Frank, that should be fifteen, yeah.
It's in two locations right there, one after the other, two sentences in a row.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to share my screen to show you?
No, we got it.
Okay, great.
Then, then on, um, this is, this is a very minor thing, but it's a thing, um, page fifteen, um. In the section on vegetation. In the middle of the paragraph, so it's going to be a little hard to find. But, uh, you have, you start a parenthesis and that goes I period E period, requiring no fertilizer, et cetera. So you have an open comma, but you never close the comma anywhere, so there, that, that. IE needs to be ended at some point.
Got that, Gino, yeah? All right, anything else, Frank?
Um. There was, but I don't know that there's substantive anymore, let me just, if you give me two more seconds, somebody else has one, they can go ahead. Changing a word from, from one word to another word that will be more appropriate, I don't know if that's important at this point. Uh, if you look at page, uh, section five point ten point one. Uh, right be, the word before the last sentence, the last sentence starts D O E R encourages. And right before that, it says, because of important water management, cooling and climate benefits trees have. I would almost say, instead of trees have, I would say trees provide. But again, that's just a, a minor grammatical thing and that, other than that, that's what I got.
I like that.
I'm, I'm, I mean, these are tiny little things, I'm fine with that change, Gino, you got that?
Yeah.
All right, anything else, Frank?
I got, that's it for me, thank you.
Addie May, any comments?
No, that's so far, so good.
Robert.
I'm good.
Will?
I'm good too.
Um, Michael, is your hand still up from before, or is that a new?
No, it's a question, I guess, are you allowed to make these kind of, what, what level of changes are you allowed to do without having to recreate a, uh. A vote. So to speak. Like these things that you're just talking about, this is something you could just do unilaterally with the, uh.
Grammatical stuff?
What's that?
Nothing that has been suggested is substantating, it was just grammatical.
I know, I'm just wondering whether that's what you're allowed to do, that.
Well, well, beyond that, I, I mean, I think what I would suggest is. The following articles. With the codification. Uh, provides the authority, none of these, none of these section numbers are going to be in the final version anyway, because. It, this, it's going to be incorporated into the, the recodification of our bylaws and regulations. So that firm, general code will straighten that out automatically. Um, I think they will also straighten out the parenthesis issue, the change, of course, they would not change. Have to provide. But if that's, I mean, I don't know how, if that's significant enough to make an amendment on town meeting floor. Because the, the, the warrant is final now, we, we can't make wording changes. Right now until town meeting floor.
Okay, so whatever, you'll find out, I get, one question I have to you is for procedure is whether. You, I don't know if you're planning on doing this, whether you. It's, it's on the warrant. But at this point, do you need to vote? To approve this draft as a board? Um. Because it's. Something that, whether you want to consider doing that for your own records.
I was planning on. Once every, once the board spoke, I was planning on voting on this.
Okay.
Does anyone on the board have any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? The amended solar by law?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, I'm going to start with Rob.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Addie?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Chris is an aye, um. Again, this is, this is going to be a first swing at it. Um, there's going to be a lot of cleanup over the winter and, and again, from the very beginning, I fully expected that this would come back to next year's town meeting. In just a cleaned up format, um, and again, we're going to, we're going to have a lot of guidance over the fall. Um, does anyone have any other questions?
No questions, just that, taking advantage of the fact that, um. This is the first planning board meeting on a Zoom. Anyone who didn't feel like sitting through the discussion of a seven hour advisory meeting on YouTube, this, if they're watching this and. For anyone that doesn't know zoning. If we say an area is zoned by right, it doesn't mean that something's going to be built there the same way our town center is zoned for business general. If someone wants to build a building or a business, they still go through all the various. Normal processes, it doesn't mean that something's just going to go up overnight. And it's also depends on who owns the land and all of the other various restrictions, it's just zoning and not everyone always remembers that, so it's just a reminder.
So Addie May, um. What I was considering. For town meeting is, would you be willing to work on the handout with me?
Of course.
At town meeting, would you stand at the door with me and chat with people and pass out the handout as people come in?
I would.
And Frank will do that and I figure, um, Will and Rob will handle the inside stuff.
I can help too, Chris.
That would be great, Elizabeth.
And Addie May, we, let me, let's extend that to you as well, if you wanted to help with pulling something together, um, you know, please, let me know.
Michael, is your hand up?
Yeah.
A new one?
Yep, I'm trying to be polite. Yep, I'm trying to be polite. Uh, okay, I would suggest that, and when you're doing your handout. Whether you want to use more of the uh. It was a draft background piece.
Yep.
Created and whether you uh might want to use a significant part of that to help us uh. Just having that on the record, a lot of that detail on the record. Um, would probably help you uh enforce uh or defend the bylaw, which was what the legal advice was given from another town.
Um, actually, I had mentioned to Will um that I thought it would be a good idea if you read a portion of it at town meeting. Sure. As part, as part of the intro.
There it is, but I think handing it out seems to be also was legally advised to that it'd be part of that, that some of that level of detail. Being part of the handout, um, which could help in the, in its defense going forward.
My, well, I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing unless anyone on the board has any other comments. Um, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
And.
All right, again, I'm gonna go right down the list. Frank.
Yes, I.
Addie May.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Rob.
Alright.
And Chris's an aye. Um, Gino, any other? Business from town planner?
No.
Does anyone else have any other business that they would like to discuss meetings with other boards? I hear crickets.
Just everyone's excited about the library. If you get a chance to take a walk in, it's exciting. And there's lots of kids and families and it's everything that we'd hoped for as a, from a planning standpoint of having a community meeting spot. And um, you know, where there's this, getting the bus to drop, the late bus from school to drop kids at the library. And hopefully teens will be able to do, you know, work on school projects there. Um, you know, within reason, there are guidelines to allow them to, you know, they're not a, no food, no drink. It's uh, they're gonna try and come up with some guidelines with the kids for, you know, they want their, their drink and can keep it clean. And kind of work just the way, you know, all the things that you hope that um kids can have a space. That's theirs within the community, that's gives them some independence. Um, it's kind of neat.
Great.
Uh, Chris, I was just going to mention, um, I was at the land acquisition committee last night and I presented some. Info on the rail trail, including potential expansion in the future up into Framingham and connecting to Ashland. Uh, but also going to mention that um, there's a uh. Basically, a designated bicycle route called the East Coast Greenway that runs from Maine to Key West. And um, they would like to designate the existing Upper Charles Trail, including the little section in Sherburne. Basically, from Whitney Street all the way down into Milford as part of this. So um, I'll be presenting that to the select board and just wanted to say that um, that whole, that. Access to the trail only exists due to the work of Gino and the board as of about twenty years ago or so. When they put that in place in the uh, in the permitting for Whitney Farms.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anything um that you need from the board?
I don't think so. I just, um, there's a letter that the selectmen have to sign saying that they're agreeing um, being designated as part of this greenway. Uh, I I can send a copy to Gino that he can distribute to the board. That is appropriate, but I don't think there's any action required by the board.
Okay, thank you. Um. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just, just one quick thing. At the last meeting, I had said that I was going to uh leave for about a week. That it ended up not happening because of storms in California. Um, but so it's, I'm instead leaving this Thursday instead of two weeks earlier. And uh, but I'm, it's a much shorter trip. I'll be back on Monday, so just a quick, quick trip out there.
All right, thank you.
How do you know I'm gone?
Um, the the meeting, our meeting on the fourth, do we have any sense of what that meeting looks like? Um, do we have anything on the agenda?
No, not so far.
Okay, so what I would like to do on the fourth is I'd like to basically, um, it's gonna be an in-person meeting. I'd like it to be informal. We'll sit around the table and we'll, um, if everyone can think about the best way to pitch this thing at town meeting. And what the handout should look like. Um, does that seem like a good plan for the fourth?
Sure.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Um, just mentioned that uh unfortunately, I will again be out of town on the fourth.
Okay, so Rob, so so part of your punishment, I'm I'm gonna ask you to serve on the um town planner search committee. Would you be willing to do that? Addie, Addie May is gonna do it and um. Uh, I don't know. I I asked this, I asked several people. Would you be willing to do work on that? You're muted.
I can't hear you, Rob. Rob, you're still muted.
I I'm sorry, I I have a lot of commitments uh up through June that is going to. Uh, causing issues, but if it's only a couple of people meeting outside the context of scheduled meetings, I guess I can do it.
Okay, so I'll take that as a yes. I'll let Diane know. Thank you. I think you'll be great helping us in that capacity. So um, April fourth, we'll start working on pitching this thing to town meeting. And does anyone have anything else, any board members have anything else they want to add? All right, um, Gino, have a nice vacation. Um, thank you very much, everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm gonna start with Frank.
Aye.
Addie May.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Rob.
Alright.
And Chris's an aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.
Hi, team.